John's can't connect the server.
Okay, wait.
Just a second.
Except me.
Can't get in.
Is anybody connected?
No.
No.
Am I? Am I? I'm in, I think.
No.
I think I'm in. Am I? I don't even know.
No, I don't think so.
Does it show anything up there?
It says "Log Out," so I'm logged in.
How could you be the only one?
Well, I suppose it's devices.
You log out and log back in?
Should.
Try it.
We can get.
Where's Tyler? Is he here?
Yeah.
There you go.
I just logged out and logged back in.
We'll log her out.
Someday this will actually work on the first try.
I think so.
It's always John. It must be John.
Is that in?
Oh, I think. Are you in?
He shows up on the board, doesn't he?
Yeah, we're in.
I think I am too.
Yeah. You're in?
Cannot.
Are all of you able to log in? No. They're in. Just John.
Yeah.
John and Terry. What did you guys do?
The man of the hour.
Somebody knows something about computers.
Two people came on, the way you said.
But I certainly don't.
They don't know what they're doing.
No, I don't mean it that way. I just mean that was last one. And you went on the line, but I can't.
Yeah.
Oh my God, blow all this stuff off.
And then John right here.
Oh.
Reset the whole thing.
Every time he was taken over.
We need to have a cheat sheet to remind us of that.
Tyra, the seat is right here for you.
It's right here.
Okay, now what? Well, it takes a while for it to come up.
Wow, September is raining.
So should we mute these?
By technology, we're all here.
That's right. Somebody just roped it out.
Okay, you can all hit "Present" if you haven't. Okay, are we ready? Jill, you ready?
Well, they stopped in my safe present.
One more.
Oh, there we go. There we go.
Okay.
We got a present logged in.
They're all here.
They're all here in a county.
Yes.
All there. Okay. Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna call the Common Council Meeting to Order Tuesday, October 23rd, 2018, at 6:14 PM. Roll call?
Alderman Madden?
Here. Oh, don't they hit... We did "Present." We don't have to do that.
I'm sorry.
Okay, everyone's "Present."
We're here. We're on board.
New system still we're working through. Okay. Statement of public notice.
This meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Um, communications from Mayor's office really have nothing other than the city trick-or-treats coming up on Halloween itself, October 31st, which I believe is next week, Wednesday, 6:00 to 8:00, I believe.
Yes, correct.
Okay. Um, public comment, none. Public hearing.
Upon the petition of the City of Muskego shall the PI-1 zoned portion of tax key number 2196.976 be granted a rezoning from PI-1 Park and Recreation Lands to B-3 General Business District for the purpose of allowing future commercial uses in or on the former Parks Garage building site. The 2020 comprehensive plan also needs to be amended from institutional to commercial uses.
Thank you. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to give you a little overview of this. This has been talked about a few times amongst the board from the idea of the sale of this property, since the city no longer needs it. So one of the things we all agreed, that one of the steps before we sell it was we want to make sure the zoning is appropriate for a potential user. The way it's zoned right now would really only be good for like a school or church or another governmental agency. So most of the buyers that we've heard are interested, in fact, all of them that we hear are interested, none of them fall into that category. So to make this actually usable for somebody, to make an offer off of a property, they know they actually have a zoning that's possibly suitable, we went forward in our rezoning the park portion of this property. Part of it was zoned commercial or like HC-1 and part of it was park. We're changing the park zoning portion to B-3, which is a very comparable business district to the uses that are in that area. We did not rezonate to the HC-1, or we're not recommending HC-1, which is along the roadway, as that's more of a retail kind of thing, and the way this building is isn't really conducive to a retail use. Doesn't mean it couldn't be, but it's more of a storage kind of building, and a lot of the users that we've heard that may be interested in putting an offer in would use it as more of like a storage type building, more so than a retail, because it's removed from the building. So if a user were to buy the property and still wanted to do some kind of retail or something by the street, they still could, because there is plenty of space there. So we're really only zoning the back portion of the property, as that's the part that had that park zoning on it.
Thank you, Adam. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak at the public hearing? Okay, we take that as a no, and therefore I will close. This public hearing is regarding the sale of city property, or rezoning of city property on Pioneer Drive. Just wanted to make clear. Okay? Did you wish to speak on this topic? Come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Bill Bowersox. I live on Kidery Court, 7776 Kidery Court, which is adjacent to the property.
Okay.
My concern is, by going from park to commercial, I'm not exactly sure what the commercial zoning will allow and not allow. Is there anyone who can... I mean, do we know what would be allowed in terms of use of that space? He had said "storage," but, you know, are we talking apartments? Are we talking condos? Are we talking... I don't know. That's why we're here.
And we can't, during the public hearing, we can't respond at this time? We just take your comment.
I see.
And so Adam could call you tomorrow if you want to reach out to him, and he'll give you that info.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then this public hearing is closed. Consent agenda.
Approval of Common Council minutes for October 9th, 2018. Approval of operator licenses. Resolution 88. Approval of letter of credit release for Pelman Farms LLC, also known as Caracomes Green Court Development. Resolution 89. Reapproval of certified survey map and condo plat for Hartford Land Development. And Resolution 90, designating public officials to issue non-traffic citations in accordance with Section 18-3 of the Municipal Code of the City of Muskego.
Move to approve and gross.
Wait, wait just a second.
Too fast for you?
Yeah, too fast.
Oh, I can do that.
Okay. Yeah, you forgot you gotta push the buttons.
There you go.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Forgot.
Alderman Kobaki and other woman Madden. Any discussion? So you have to hit your RTS. And there's none, please cast your vote.
Did I miss it?
Is that what you wanted?
No.
Can you, can we undo this or not?
You could, but it doesn't give you a lot of time to change it.
Let's see.
You could do it right on. We should have that extended a little longer.
Oh, just...
I think orally, we could just put it on the record.
So you, you... So if there was a mistake, Alderman Porgman, you would prefer to vote yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
That's on record now?
Yeah.
Can we get that changed? Can we get that changed or extend it a little bit longer, maybe? Because you hit that, and then it only, it gives you like a second, you can't change it.
Okay. Okay, it's approved unanimously. Consent agenda, that is. New business, Resolution 91, 2018. Approval of the 2019 General Fund operating budget and tax levy. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. And we have a second. Discussion. You should really hit the RTS, because it recognizes who you are, and then I'll call on you in order, because it's actually gonna bring you up in order now. So we have Alderman Kobaki.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget to reduce the contribution to the Muskego Senior Taxi from $15,000 to $5,000, and restore $10,000 back into the roads budget.
Second.
Waiting for the second.
So you've got it. You've got to do it on your, on the system here.
She did. She did.
With a motion to amend.
Well, there is a motion. Did you do that?
Do I hit amend?
Original one.
Lord knows.
Oh, that's the original one.
Not the original one.
Okay.
How do you get this?
Okay, now you're, now we're doing...
We need a second on the...
On the amendment.
Well, that was, I only did on the first one.
Right.
So you need a motion, the motion for the...
We have amendments.
Eileen's seconded.
Kobaki and Madden.
On the amendment.
Eileen has to do it on her...
You have to press the button, Eileen.
I did. See it? It says, "Eileen Madden, second."
But I didn't, I didn't, I didn't do the, I didn't do the motion for the amendment.
Correct.
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 Technology's madness.
I don't, I don't know what to do now.
Hit amend?
You have to hit amend. Kevin has hit amend.
It says amend right at the top.
Okay, wait, wait here. Let's do accept. Okay. Can you do it now, Eileen?
There.
Okay.
There we go.
Am I doing something?
I don't know why it's flashing, but anyhow, we have a motion and a second. I don't know if anybody needs it repeated. Okay, is there any discussion?
Well, I'd like to make it clear that, and I think I'm speaking on behalf of the council, that we support the senior taxi. Amen. There was a lot of discussion last night about the senior taxi, and the impression I got is people thought that we did not support it. We do, in fact, support the senior taxi. I do have copies of the 2016 and 2015 tax filing for the Muskego Senior Taxi. And just a real quick review. In 2015, contributions, government contracts, fundraising activities, produced a revenue of $90,693. Salaries of that figure, salaries were $49,730, or about half, or over half. Net excess revenue over expenses was $9,569. Beginning of that tax year, again, this is 2015, this return is showing cash savings investments. These are not cars or any, these are actual cash investments of $84.56. At the end of that tax year, at the end of 2015, that grew to $21,312. So there's $21,000 in the bank with the taxi service. Moving on to 2016, contributions, government contracts, fundraising activities rose their revenue to $130,628. Salaries and compensation rose from $49,000 to $64,717. Total expenses were $104,195, giving an excess revenues over expenses of $26,433. In that year, the beginning balance in cash was $21,312. End of that year, 2016, there were $39,611. These are the only reports that are available online. I don't know what transpired in 2017, but I think it's important that we take a look at these financials before we make changes to our budget. Take a look at the 2016, or 2017 balance budgets. Take a look at a business plan for the senior taxi, to see where they're going with this, and where they're at right now as far as excess over expenses, and what their bank account situations look like before we make any other major contributions to the senior taxi.
Is there any other... Oh, gotta look. There are no other requests to speak? You have to, there you are. Oh, Alderman Hamel.
But Alderman Madden is...
She's not on there.
Yeah, she is. She's one.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll take her fir-, I have to take her first. I'm sorry. I thought that was still Kevin.
Just in adding to what Kevin said, I remember sitting on that council when Jim Nichols came to us and said he wanted us to help them start this up. And from day one, when that conversation started in 2006, and every single year since, and every bit of the minutes, all the way down the line, we talked about how important it was for them to get self-sufficient. I remember sitting on the board, and we talked about how we need to hire somebody that can help them get self-sufficient. It was imperative. It was part of the whole process. And then we got a shock at the last minute, when you came and asked for a 200,000, or 200% increase on what you were getting. Naturally, I started looking, because I too was surprised that things were moving in this direction. And I did the same thing. I pulled up the 990s and kind of scratched my head and looked around, and I, I'm, there's just so many questions. We support the senior taxi. We want to see it successful. I think we just need to figure out exactly where it is, where it's going, and what's happening with it.
Alderman Hamel?
The senior taxi is good and benefits a lot of people in the city. However, I think this was, it appears to have been rushed. I would like to see a lot of the financials as well, to see, you know, how much of a need they, they need from the city. I have, I don't think it should come out of the roads, because the road funding should be for the roads. If we're gonna fund it, I think it needs to come from some other source, rather than taking it from the roads. I think the road funding should be meant for the roads. But I, you know, in regards to what Kevin was saying on the financials, I think we need to take some time and look at this, and see if it is needed, how much is needed. Because like I said, I do believe it's beneficial, but I think we need to do it in the right way. And taking it from the roads, I don't think that's the proper way of doing it.
Thank you. Alderman Wolf?
Is there a way to ask about the financials and current status right now? They're here.
You can ask questions if you want.
Would you like to step up? Do you have any, anything you'd like to add?
Well, if you, if you have specific questions, only if you have specific questions.
Well, the question is, I'm just going off what, what Kevin has talked about. He only went up to 16, so you have 17, 18. I'm talking about the, you showed a positive balance for those last couple of years. Where are you at right now on the balance?
Sure. Well, I don't have any financial information. I was coming as an observer tonight. But we have been working very hard and steadily towards self-sufficiency. As I mentioned at the last meeting, much of what we have to show right now is based on very hard work in grant writing and fundraising. So we are not guaranteed these dollars from year to year. Many of these grants are a one-time grant opportunity, or a bi-annual grant opportunity, or based on the fundraising committee each year and how much they can raise. So what we're looking for is base funding, so that we can have some assurance and support to the many volunteers who are working hard to make sure this service is around for when others need it. So we are doing better every year, and we're working towards self-sustainability, but a lot of those dollars are dollars funded through the grant writing and the fundraising. We're trying to keep the costs down for the riders. In terms of the staff cost, it was me in the beginning. Before me, there was one administrator, and we did everything from driving the taxis, to doing the bookkeeping, to scheduling rides, to recruiting volunteers, and everything in between. So we are slowly growing our staff based on the absolute need to manage all these requests that we get.
Basically, I'm just looking at the question. Is, you're showing positive money at the end of 16. Did you show positive money at the end of 17?
We, we showed, let me think about the years. We showed some positive monies at 16, but it was needed to carry over for the expectation for 17. And then in 17, we requested increases from the different funding sources, which were denied, which is why we did a lot of grant writing and fundraising, to make sure that we could continue.
So you're expecting, you're expecting less, not to be in a positive in 18? Is that what you're heading towards?
We expected to run through our funds by the end of 17, because we were not assured the increase from the long-term care agencies. And that, there's no guarantee from year to year that what our costs are, are going to be agreed to by the contracted agencies. So we're trying to be proactive, and we're, again, asking the city for a base to shoot from every year, because we provide the services to city residents. Alder, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Alderman Kobaki?
Can I suggest we do this? If we have a base of $5,000 that's available right now to the Muskego Senior Taxi, we have a tremendous person who does our finances every year, who has a tendency to confine money at periodic times, depending on what, what's going on in the city. If we could take a look at the 2017 990 filings, and I don't, I don't know if Glendale will have the 2018's done by the end of the first quarter, but if we could review this whole thing in the first quarter, the 2017's, the 2018's, assuming that they're gonna be filed, we can take a look at them at the end of the first, first quarter, see what we have in our coffers at that point in time, and based on those financials, and based on what your plan is, as far as growing the senior taxi, because we'd love nothing more than that. It was mentioned last night that the senior taxi is gonna grow. We're all getting older. And, and assuming that we're gonna need that service, I'd love to see that service, because I think I'm the oldest here anyway, in force. But if we can hold off to the, to the end of the first quarter with those financial documents, with that, that information, I think we can make a better decision at that point in time, and hopefully, depending on where our budget is, maybe restore those funds at that point. No guarantees, but we'll take a look at it.
I mean, I think people try to put up, put off funding things, and one of the, one of the reasons that we've been working hard to get ahead of...
I'm sorry, there's no question asked. This is the committee discussion. There's no question asked of you.
I think he kind of asked her if he could hold off.
Did you ask a specific question?
Yeah, he asked if he could hold off. That's what I understood.
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
So I think...
And my answer to that is, one of the things we've discovered as we're writing these grants, is that some of the grant, the foundations and so forth, they are asking that you actually have a reserve, because they want to make sure that you're going to be around a while. And in order to fund you, we, we are being asked to have a reserve. So that's something that we're working towards as well for that reason.
And I'd like to see that reserve. I'd like to see what the reserve is now. And I don't know what the reserve is.
Sure.
I know what it was, what it was at the end of 2016. And that's why I'm saying we hold this off until that point, until we can see those numbers and make a rational decision.
Like many of our, our organization is based on volunteer time and talents. Our drivers are volunteers. That makes us unique, so we're trying to, our best to save the city and the community and the riders' money. We also have volunteer accountants. And so, you know, we, we aren't, we aren't operating as quickly as, you know, some other organizations who, who pay for that service. So, you know, I guess, in answer to your question, I think for coming years, as we plan in the future, we can prepare documents along with our request. But I would like you to consider approving the request. Alderman Wolf? At this time.
Yeah, I...
Do you have any questions for her, otherwise she can sit?
No, I don't have a question for her.
Okay.
Thanks. The question I have is, the paper we had last night out said that it was $10,000 a year, and it's $5,000 a year now. How, what transpired in between there?
The $10,000 a year was the original front money to get them set up back in...
That's the first, first year only?
Yeah.
That was seed money?
That was seed money.
We looked at, it was seed money, the resolution.
Okay, that's what I figured, but I just had to ask the question, so I was sure.
To be, and it was to be self-sufficient by 2010.
And I know we have an amendment on here, because I think we're all worried about the road money. The other question I would have is that, if we did move forward with this, I would like to explore pulling that money out of the landfill if possible.
That, we can't. It's...
Can't do that.
We, it's...
Can't do that?
That's per contract where it can only go. Can't do that.
What's that?
It's per contract. We have a contract with the landfill, and it specifies where those funds can go.
Money can't go there from, from the landfill.
Okay. Because I was saying it's for communities. What's that?
It's gotta be used for other purposes.
I thought it was for community use. How do you redefine that into community use?
No.
Okay, then, okay. Any other questions? Anybody have questions?
Can I get a clarification of Kevin's point?
Wait, wait. We have to press button.
Wait, wait. We have to press buttons. So we have Alderman Madden waiting in the wings.
Okay. I, my biggest concern still is the fact that this was supposed to have happened by two thousand and ten and we haven't seen any progress towards that. We hear everybody's trying, we hear everybody's trying hard, but we're not hearing how. We don't know what your steps are to get you there. And that's why I say if, if we do this and we do this, we need to see where you're going. We don't want to just keep putting money out there and not know enough about the financials. We need to understand that you are working towards that, getting self-funding like we were told when this first came forward. We love the fact that you're here. We want to see you successful. We have a lot of people in this community that may be able to help. We have a mayor who used to be, I mean, she used to do fundraising for a long time that may be able to help you with a few of those things. I think there's contracts you could be getting with the school. There's so many other places this could be coming that I don't think you've explored yet. And I, I just don't feel comfortable using taxpayer dollars to donate.
Okay, um, Alderman Hamel. No, no comments from there. It's just here now. So you should direct your comments here. Um, Alderman Hamel?
From my understanding, this was kinda put through on roads project without giving Sharon time to find other areas where the funds can come through. If we put this off for a while, would you be able to find some other area maybe we could fund this from? Cause I think, my biggest hangup is coming from the roads. I think it's worthwhile. I don't think it should come from the roads. Um, but with, with that being said, I'd also like to see, you know, if we're giving them money, we, I would like to see, you know, yearly financials on it, um, and like a, a plan of what they're going to do to get sufficient funding down the road. Can you, if we gave you more time, would you be able to find?
Are you, are you looking at first quarter of two thousand and nineteen? Because really we, we don't have a good indication.
You should probably come to the microphone. Sorry.
I want to say, are you looking at two thousand and nineteen? Cause we really don't have a good indication until maybe mid-year of where we're headed. And, you know, I could look at other funds. We have special revenue funds. Um, you know, we could look at, um, the status of where those are. So what timeframe are you asking me to look?
That's hard for me to put a number on because you're the expert on this. Um-
Cause really you can't, you really don't know until the year's over. You, you just don't because of weather conditions in the general operating. Although we do have special revenue funds that I could look through to see where we are.
So you could maybe have some possible idea in the first quarter?
Mm-hmm, yes.
You know, I guess the sooner the better. Cause the funding, you know, they're getting five thousand dollars right now, correct? And that's there no matter what.
According to the amended.
So, um, I guess if you divide fifteen up into twelve, you know, twelve months, that five thousand would last for pretty much the first quarter or the, you know, two-plus months.
And it could coincide with their financials when they bring that information forward. And then we could, um, bring all that information to the council at one time.
Okay. All right, then we have Alderman Engelhardt?
Um, first I just want to comment. Uh, I understand part of what your concern is, Alderman Madden, but, um, at the time that the original director passed from the scene, my understanding was the taxi was in very desperate condition all the way around. It has come a long ways in making progress. I think that's obvious. I don't have exact numbers to say, but it is a changed picture from what it was three years ago. Um, we've heard from the director what they're trying to do in that sense. You need hard numbers. That's fine. Um, but they're, say there's no progress or that they're exactly the same spot. They're not. That's obvious. Uh, the other part I wanted to comment on here, um, and it's partially answered with what Sharon just said, I think. Uh, if we go with Alderman Kubaki's, uh, amendment here, uh, do we clearly have a way of implementing and will we have something that we can follow through with, um, in good order in the coming year? Or are we saying it pushes it back a year at least? Or what are we actually saying in the end if we go with this amendment?
Oh, I think you just heard that Sharon will try to have something along with their financials in the first quarter.
But that wasn't the original motion made.
I heard the word, I heard the word no guarantee.
We have to, you have to put, you, you have to go in order here. So we, are, are you done, Alderman Engelhardt? Or not?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, then we have Alderman Kapusta.
I was just asking for a clarification of Kevin's motion now because I hear two motions from Kevin, so I'm not sure what you're trying to do. We had amendment on the floor.
The motion on the floor-
Right. And then you came back and said, no, I'd like to see something else.
Is to really only fund five thousand dollars. He, he didn't make any other motion.
I didn't, I just suggested that, that maybe a way of, of putting those funds back in would be to look at those financials at the end of the first quarter.
So that was part of the motion to fund the five thousand now? I just want to clarify for everybody and allow the finance director to look and then get their financials in that first quarter. That's what, that's what the motion is, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then we have, um, Alderman Wolf?
Yeah, I have some comments. Um, I did hear Kevin say when he made his motion, no guarantee, um, which concerns me. Um-
That wasn't part of the motion.
It was all part in the same statement, if I remember correctly. But I just want to point that out, that, that that was a, a concern of mine. Um, a couple other things. Um, timeframe, we talked to Sharon, the timeframe. I would, uh, say I would extend the, uh, approval of the budget by a week or two and have it done then or, or, or not, not ask for that at all. Um, the other thing is, uh, we started this in two thousand and eight and it is, uh, two thousand and eighteen. So you got ten years. I guess is that how long the taxi's been around? Am I correct?
Yep.
Ten years. And I would probably say that the city has grown by thousands and it's going to grow probably by a couple more thousands soon. So the growth, um, and I think kinda John talked about this a little bit about how it started and where it is and, and the status and now, um, I think the growth has a lot to do with that. There's, there's more people in the city. There's going to be more, um, which is concerning because, uh, you know, and I, I brought this up before. It's why I changed my vote is that we, we can find money for, for other little things in the city that really aren't as beneficial as this could be. Uh, we have a lot of people that live here and paid taxes for a long time and got older and now need help. And, um, I think when I ran for office, one of the things that I, I kinda, when I went door to door, I talked to people that what I'm looking to do is keep the city affordable for new families to come in with children and make it affordable for them, and also to keep it affordable and a nice place to live for the elderly as well. Uh, and, and that's something I'd like to keep my promise on, um, which is very concerning. If we delay this vote, I mean, you can look at it as just kind of as a Band-Aid right now. Uh, it's a one-year deal and, um, it's not a lot of money compared to what we have to offer. Uh, you know, what they need to do, and I think they should, I, I don't know who they should work with, but maybe we should, you guys should work together with the city and come up with a plan. If, if it is merging with Maguánago or if it's not, or if it's becoming, you know, whatever, you gotta find more revenue somewhere. Um, because one thing we really don't want to do is just have this keep growing. I think we're all in favor of that. Uh, the roads is not the best place to money to come from, but right now it is lean state of the game. Um, I don't know where else the money's going to come from. And, and, and I hate to say that, that, uh, you know, we, we should probably vote on the amendment and then go back and see where we're at.
Alderman Madden?
I, I just want to tell you that I have, when I went and looked at the nine nineties, I looked at several municipalities that have senior taxis, several municipalities that have been self-funded for several years. I don't believe that's not something that can happen here. I think they just need a little help and I think they need to get some more contracts with some of the senior facilities around here in the school district. There's ways for it to happen and I'm not opposed to helping them. I just don't want to see it go in the budget for many reasons. One of which, we say this is for one year, but we also said in two thousand and six, we'll get this, we'll help you get this started, but it's only going to be for two years. Oh, but it'll only be, I need to see a plan that it's going to come to an end and I know that it can.
Alderman Kubaki?
You, you mentioned something about waiting a week. I don't know what, what that will do. I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting we go into the first quarter only so that not only the, the, the filing, the nine nineties for, for two thousand and seventeen, but also two thousand and eighteen should be available at that point as well. It also gives the senior taxi a time to, to, to take a look at their organization, to take a look at what, what, what the future may bring. And I, I agree, the city, uh, the city is growing, the aging population's growing, and this is a, a refreshing time for the senior taxi to, to take a look at their program. Um, I'm not saying the money will, will, will definitely be available. I'm not saying, you know, it won't be available. I believe that we can find it to be available at the end of the first quarter, but we need that period of time to, uh, to digest the, the financials and see where they're at and, and offer our, our assistance as well.
Alderman Wolf?
No, no, I, I understand. I, I mean, that's a great point. Um, the concern I have is that if we do delay it and, and we can't find it and no one wants to go with the roads' uh, money, um, I think that, you know, I, I mentioned the word Band-Aid. I, I think it's a, it's a good thing to throw at it right now and have them reorganize and relook at what they need to do and, and, um, come back with all those things. I think I kinda mentioned it last time that we need to be more prepared for the next set of rounds for the meetings. I, I think this is thrown at us kinda late. Um, but in defense of, uh, the way that things work, the government versus people, people aren't aware of what they need to do to come in, in front of the city and, and so on, uh, and the timing of meetings. They kinda depend on their elected officials to do the right thing and, and, and not worry about those types of things. And, and that's kinda what we're here for. Yeah, do I want to give them more money? Probably not. You know, would I like to see them self-sufficient? Absolutely. Would I like to see more services added to this and, and have them be able to do it? Uh, or, or maybe they need to subcontract part of their stuff out with somebody. But I think they, they understand that now that they're going to have to move in a different direction. Um, I just don't want to hinder it for, for another ten thousand dollars. That's, that's where I'm at now. I, I, and I think delaying it, um, i- is not what I really want to do right now.
Um, Alderman Madden?
Yeah, I just want to say one more time. If, I hope you understand how important it is not to take it out of the road program. There's other places that we can get it from. And I think by doing one quarter, the first quarter, it's not going to be detrimental. We've got, we can give them the five thousand that we've always gave them, but give us all an opportunity to get it from the right place.
I would just like to add before we move on is it's a responsible thing that all of you are talking about here to the taxpayers and, and just taking that time and getting the information. So I think it's a good discussion and I think it's rational.
Well, I, I think they're both, they're both rational and they're both, uh, responsible, um, to the, to the taxpayers, uh, to all the citizens in, in the city, you know, especially the people who use it. Um, now you maybe lose my train of thought. Uh, I was going to mention something. Um, oh, the, the road program, if we have problems, uh, maybe Sharon can answer this. Uh, what happens if we use all the money in the road programs? We don't give it to the taxi, but we use all the money in the road programs and we need another ten thousand dollars. What do you do to find that?
Again, we have eighty thousand in contingency, so we would look at that account.
Okay, which I figured. So, I mean, it's not like we're, we're just pulling the money away. The money's still there if we need it. Um, and hopefully, uh, as I saw the maps, we're supposed to have a warmer winter, whatever that means. But, uh, so we're really not a hundred percent taking it away. I mean, my, my goal is to increase the, the, the funds to the, uh, road program in the long haul. Um, we're going to have to take a look at, at the budget, I think, next year and, and make some serious decisions on, on some things that we want to do because I think we gotta put some more money to the roads. But that's, uh, that's a whole nother subject for another day.
Okay, there's no other discussion, so, uh, you'll be casting your vote on the amendment.
Now wait.
The amendment.
Kevin?
Yes.
So yes means you agree, no means you don't.
Um, it fails for two, three. So we're back to the original motion unless there's any other amendment. And I, I'm guessing that Alderman Kubaki, you're still interested in the financials in the first quarter one way or the other?
I think we all are.
Still like to see those, yes.
Would you like to put that in motion?
Like to make a, make a motion.
You gotta wait. We gotta clear this out.
Clear something out here.
How does that get on the agenda? How does that get on the agenda?
That's part of the, it's part of the budget.
No, no.
Hang on, let's clarify this.
Having them turn in their financials is part of the budget?
I'd like to make a motion that we-
Cause we're funding them.
But then how's that agendized?
It's, it's, it's part of the agenda because you're financing them.
This is amendment.
Please, please press your buttons and go ahead. You got a motion?
Like to make a motion that we, um, have the, uh, Muskego Senior Taxi provide two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen nine nineties, um, to us at the end of the first quarter, along with a business plan, uh, at the end of the first quarter as well.
I don't, I don't know how to work this.
Is there, we have a second for Alderman Madden?
What do you want me to do?
Okay, now if you want to discuss, you have to press your button and I will call on you.
Well, the amendment says I said it.
Now wait a second. So Kevin, you made a motion.
There was, yeah.
Kevin made a motion. Who seconded it? She did. What? He did.
Yeah.
I know he did.
And now Eileen, you need to-
Kevin, go ahead.
So no, Eileen, you need to second it again. Something went wrong. Okay. Okay. And then Alderman Wolf, I believe you pressed to speak or no? Or is that an old thing hanging out there? I think it's an old thing.
Oh, that's Neil. Neil has it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Neil. Okay.
I don't see how that's part of the budget, sir. Mister, mister lawyer there. I don't see how that's, um, that's, that, that's totally, no, to, to now add that, um, to, to, to require that disclosure as part of this, this budget approval is not, is not, it doesn't, doesn't, doesn't mesh.
The budget has to do with finances and that's pretty much what the mayor said. If it has to do with finances, it is part of this overall whole big discussion that you're having.
Wow, you're, you're really stretching that.
But what you could do is you could vote against the amendment. This is an amendment.
This is an amendment. That's correct.
This is an amendment. So is there, if you wish to discuss, if you wish to discuss the amendment, please press your button.
Wait a minute, Neil, were you, what did you say? I didn't hear that.
I say it's off, I say it's off topic. It's not off, it's not on the agenda. We're, what, nothing on this, nothing on this I can he see here that has anything to do with having, um, agencies disclose their financials. I just don't see that as being part of this budget approval.
Okay, okay. All right.
Kind of we're trying to prove the budget.
Alderman Borgman, you do have one point here. Just consulted with Jeff here, the attorney. So if you would retract that, you can do it after, but because it's in between voting on the actual budget, you can do it right after the budget.
There's a way we have to get back to that first motion. And if we, if you would approve an amendment right now, how are we going to get back to the first motion?
I thought we did and it failed.
No.
No, this is another one. If you rescind your motion and your second, then we can vote on the budget and you can do the, that motion after that. Got it?
You need, you need to vote on the budget, budget first.
I, I do. I am up there for a question. If, if everybody else is done, I don't know.
Okay, well, we have to, we have to finish this before-
Questions up there.
So, so do I have to rescind?
You rescind, correct? You rescind the motion. You can make it later, right after the budget's adopted.
Well, I, I'll rescind the motion only to make this process work better, but how irresponsible is it not to ask for financials, Neil? How irresponsible is that?
And then, and then Alderman-
You're asking-
Will you rescind your second? Thank you very much. Now, we're going to press buttons if we're going to speak.
I do have a speak up there. And I did, I did mention that I would like to see the taxi and the city work together. And I think she would be willing to do all that. And I think that would be part of the due process because this is a one-year extension. She has to come back and ask again if there's going to be any extra dollars, uh, for a following year. So I think that you, to, we're just going- So I think that we're just going through exercise right now.
Okay, I want to, I have to cut you off because to follow what Alderman Borgman is saying, we should not be discussing that right now.
But I'm going after what I said.
If you want to discuss the budget as it is, but not that for right now. I'm following what he suggested, which is correct.
Well, there was a motion on there and I'm talking about...
The motion's gone.
No, it's not gone because we had people up there to talk about it first and he couldn't pull it off until everybody has a chance to talk. But if you want to change the process of everything, then let me know you want to change it.
That's what I'm telling you right now.
You're changing a process that's not letting everybody do what they're supposed to do up here. We're here to talk about things and work it out and you're changing the rules as we go and that should not be happening.
Neil brought up a point that the attorney agreed with and we had to take everything back.
But there was people in line to talk on that whole thing. You have to finish the process. The process was not done and you should not cut people off.
Okay, I want to take one moment, I want everybody to listen. The motion was in error, it was not correct. And Alderman Borgman brought the tension, so there should be no more discussion on it and we'll move forward. Does anyone, I think you should clear your buttons and does anyone wish to speak regarding the budget?
I think you're controlling the meeting without everybody discussing, having a chance to do it. And at this point, this is our meeting, you're here only to facilitate it and you should let people finish their statement. And I was almost done with about three more words and I would have been done and we went to a whole nother section here that we don't need to go to. So when we go through the process, it should be done as a process and then go back to the original motion and then rescind it. That's my point.
I don't know what he said, but, okay. So right now you have the budget before you. And if there's no more discussion on the budget, then please cast your vote on the budget.
The budget as it stands.
As it is.
That was the original motion.
The original.
With the $5,000, $15,000.
$15,000.
Right. I need, we need the right buttons.
We don't have the right buttons.
I'm sorry.
It is approved six to one? Okay. If you, this is your time if you want to do that. I just want to make it clear that this is the process, if that's what you want to do. As soon as she clears it out.
I don't have to push a button.
You've got to wait, she's clearing it out yet.
I'd like to make a motion that we have the Muskego Senior Taxi Service provide us with the 2017 and 2018 990 filings as well as a business plan for the future of that very valuable service.
By the end of the quarter?
By the end of the first quarter.
And we have a second?
You'd have to ask me.
Push a button for the ask question.
I have no button to push.
Yeah, we have no buttons.
Where did it go? The motion and second one, there it is. Now you push your button. Alderman Borgman?
Where is that? What resolution is that a part of? And why is it a part of it?
I am a little concerned because we took the approval of the 19 budget, you guys voted on it. It approved, we now move to the next approval of the capital budget. I'm not sure where...
So we need to add it to a future...
We didn't go to that yet.
Future agenda?
I know we didn't, I know we didn't go to it.
Let it be done after that, so...
I don't remember saying that. What Neil said, what Neil's saying is correct.
I withdraw my motion.
Let's just withdraw it and continue on and let him know when he can do it. Because depending on you, we don't know.
If he does it, I can't stop him in the middle. He can do it and then Neil can make his comments.
Well, when can he legally do it?
At the end, future agenda items.
He can't do it and it's not on the, I suppose he could try to do it.
Under miscellaneous, okay.
Future agenda items.
All right. So we have continuing new business, Resolution 92, 2018, approval of the 2019 capital budget.
Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second.
Oh, sorry.
Any discussion, press your RTS. Okay, please cast your vote.
Waiting for buttons.
It's approved unanimously. Resolution 93, 2018, approval of the 2019 sewer utility budget and rates.
Move to approve.
And we have a second. Any requests to speak? Okay, please cast your vote. It's approved unanimously. Resolution 94, 2018, approval of 2019 water utility budget and rates. We have a motion and a second. Any requests to speak? Please cast your vote.
Yeah, it messed up. I hit it too fast. It should be a yes.
Okay, Alderman Madden, it should be amended to a yes, so it's a unanimous approval. Then we have review of committee reports.
Finance Committee for September 25th, 2018. Public Works and Safety Committee for September 17th, 2018.
Okay, first reading of ordinances and possible second reading if rules are waived. Ordinance 1422, an ordinance to amend the zoning map and 2020 comprehensive plan for the city of Muskego. PI 1 to B3 for portion of the tax key number 2196.976. Okay, voucher approval.
Motion to approve utility vouchers in the amount of $429,351.51.
Second.
We have to use this.
Sorry. Do I have to repeat it?
No, no.
Am I supposed to do both?
Yes.
Sorry, motion and second and no discussion, please cast your vote. Approved unanimously.
Motion to approve general fund vouchers in the amount of $1,781,724.12.
We have a motion and a second, any requests to speak? Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously.
Just like to mention there are no tax vouchers. Motion to approve wire transfers for debt services in the amount of $52,075.70.
We have motion and a second, any requests to speak? Please cast your vote. Approved unanimously. City official reports, I have none.
Oh, no, I got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, missed it, apologize.
Motion to approve payroll transmittals in the amount of $335,502.77.
And we have a second, any requests to speak? Please cast your vote. And approved unanimously. Again, no city official reports. Any communications, miscellaneous business is authorized by law? Is there anything you wish to communicate under miscellaneous business?
No.
Okay. Then we also have updates from Aldermanic Liaisons, Muskego Senior Taxi, Alderman Borgman.
Well, just a big thank you for all of you for listening last night to all the concerns of the people that were here. I know many of them were speaking for the first time in front of a big group or in front of a group like this and they were a little timid, a little scared. So thank you very much for your patience.
Muskego Community Festival?
There was some concerns brought up at the meeting that they like to probably bring in front of the city. So I would just let that go that way and see where it goes with them for future, how the festival's going to work and things like that. But other than that, it seemed like, even with the weather and everything, it seemed like it was a successful festival and the parade as well, so...
Can you communicate one thing back that they missed? The first time in a long time. No porta-potties at the parade route, there are a lot of little children and people and the businesses were being inundated, so take that back to them.
Okay.
Thanks. Muskego Historical Society?
I have no updates.
Little Muskego Lake District, Alderman Engelhardt?
No update at this time.
Thank you, Advanced Disposal Services?
Again, no update.
Okay. Okay, future agenda items?
I have two. I'd like to talk about the extension of Bellevue to, yeah.
Bay Lane.
Bay Lane Road. I don't know what meeting that would be appropriate at, if it's COW or if it's a council meeting.
It's actually going to be on the next council anyhow.
Okay. Then, again, I don't know if there's a discussion for COW or for the council, but I would like to talk about the financials for the Muskego Senior Taxi.
Got it. Okay. And so that's a request, do we need a motion and a second for that? No, that's just a...
She just wants to...
Okay, got it. Just want to follow the process.
Oh, you're okay.
Okay, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor? I oppose, we adjourn.
She's got to come back with a full package.
Yeah.
Made it all out for us.
Thank you, guys.